Question of the Grant County Council Wednesday, June the 12th, 2024. The prayer this evening will be led by Mr. Connor with the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Poling. If you would stand.
I would like you to pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this chance to be together and do the people's work. We pray that our work will be pleasing in your sight first and foremost. We ask that you be with all of our law enforcement officers, first responders, military here and abroad. Be with them, give them your hedge of protection. It's in your son's name I pray for his sake. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. If you would, do the roll call, please.
Scott?
Here.
Connor?
Here.
Iggs?
Here.
Perez?
Present.
Poling?
Here.
Lenny?
Mr. Poling won't be here this evening.
At the middle court?
Here. We have a call. Next item on the agenda is the auditor's report.
You have your general fund and your health balances in front of you. You also were given, we completed our spring settlement, so you have a copy of the Form 22 to show the distribution for the spring settlement.
Are there any questions or comments regarding the auditor's report? Do you know what percent was collected?
You also should have that sheet here, too.
Okay, I'm going through here.
For, if I did it right, it's 59%.
Oh, yeah, I see that now. If there's no questions, we'll move on. You should have received this evening as well as electronically the minutes for the regular session made the 15th, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If there are no corrections to the minutes, I entertain a motion.
So move.
I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Poling to approve the Grant County Council regular session minutes May the 15th, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side?
Abstain.
One abstention. The minutes still are approved. We'll move on to new business. I would like to add an item, item H, attorney contract line item. The first item under new business is Grant County Sheriff Bill Garcia, additional appropriation within the Grant County General Fund as well as a salary ordinance amendment, which would be the general fund as well. Good evening, Sheriff.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Thank you for letting me come up here today. It seems like every time I come up asking for something, hopefully when they'll bring you guys something instead of always asking. But, you know, we are here tonight, just a couple of things to start off with. As you well know, the jail's been overcrowded for some time and we've come up with a plan that the council has agreed upon to move inmates to other facilities. I can tell you this has allowed us to raise them around really of our team members working in the jail. We've had less issues because of that. Today, we have a total of 63 inmates that are at other facilities with our goal of getting 40 more out. The state recommends that you only be, that your facility only be around 80% full. And to meet that recommendation, we'd have to get down to 220. If we do 40 more, that would get us down to 238. Our current population today is 278. And of course, we have 274 beds, but you'd be surprised how big of a difference it's made for us to get that population down. With that being said, obviously, with moving inmates to the facility, we are charged by the other facilities at a rate of $40 per day. On our initial request, we asked for $400,000 to move the inmates. Today, we're requesting another 350. I don't believe we'll spend all of that, and I don't want to have to come back to you guys again asking for more money. I think we'll be able to return a big portion of that to you. But with moving the other 40 inmates, if we're able to do that, that would put us at 103 total inmates being placed in another facility at $40 a day. So that's our request for the council today that you approve us so that we can continue with this project. As you well know, the overcrowding is always a big issue. It's the reason some other facilities have been sued. You know, I'm not pushing, and I was talking to some members that are here today. As a sheriff's office, we're not pushing for a new jail. That's not our intention at all. Our intention is just, we just push out information to the commissioners and to the council, and you guys decide whether a new jail's going to be built or not. We work with whatever you give us. So if the council decides and the commissioners decide that we stay with what we have, we'll make the best of it, continue programs like this. It will kind of give us a chance to gather ourselves, slow down, take a deep breath, and continue moving forward without a lawsuit occurring. So I think this is a good program for us to do to make sure that we don't get sued by the federal government, and I think this will keep that from happening. So I would request those funds to be appropriated.
Sheriff, do you have an inmate amount, like number, that you want to see? Like say for, say we're going to be in the budget process coming up?
We like to get down to the state recommended, 220. What that does for us, it allows us to move people around. You know, we have issues. One of the things people don't understand, there's certain inmates that can't be around other inmates, so you have to be able to move around. It also gives us an opportunity to classify inmates. Before, when we were at 248, we weren't able to classify inmates. So we could have an individual that was in for a theft with a murder suspect. This will give us an opportunity to classify the inmates, and it also gives us an opportunity to provide more programs up there for the inmates to try to keep them from coming out. So we'd like to get to around the 220. If we get to about 238 with an additional 40, that would be very helpful to us also.
So I guess the number I'm looking for is, okay, right now, you're housing 103, right?
Well, right now, 63, if we move the 40, it'd be 103.
Okay.
And that gets us down to 238, which I think would be a good number.
Okay, so say we budget for the 103 for next year.
Yes.
Okay, and then you give back to over the 279. Then what would be your next plan?
Well, we would have to look at continuing to move people out to keep us at that number. Right now, what we're doing, what we're currently doing is, the first and last year, we met with the city court judges to where we're able to O.R. people, so people, nonviolent offenders that are arrested, we get them O.R. and get them out. We've worked with community corrections to get a couple of people put on home detention instead of being in jail. So we'll continue to work those programs. We'll continue to contact the judges to keep those numbers low. Since we started moving people out, we've gotten as low as 266. And then obviously, we're hovering right around 280s right now with only the 63 being out. We did contact the judges, and one of the things that we talked about is doing, and you and I discussed it, video court, and they've all agreed to do that when they're able to. Obviously, there's some instances where the, where they have to, the inmates have to come back for court, and so sometimes we'll come back and transport them back to court. But if we could get around, say, around the 238 to 220 number would be great for the jail as far as our concrete.
If you got 103 people, $40 a day, that's 412,000.
That's right.
Right?
Yes, sir.
And whoever I gave you 400,000, you want 350,000 more?
To try to get us through to the rest of the year, we'll probably give most of that back, and we probably won't use it all. You're talking about at 103, we're looking at, at the 63 we're currently having, 78,120 per month to get them in another facility. At 103, it's going to be 123,600 per month to get them into another facility.
Is the 80% recommendation a new recommendation from the state? Because I feel like getting down to that number is the first time I've ever heard any effort. 274 has always been that number.
I don't know if that's new. I know it's been that way since I've been on for last year and a half. That's what they advised us and recommended to us.
Have you ever calculated how much it costs us per day to house them in Maine?
You know, right now, we are in a, the ISA and the Sheriff's Association has commissioned a study to do that, and what we've done is, we've taken three, or they've taken three different facilities, different sizes, to try to come up with a number. Because it's really hard to do. I mean, you can always calculate the salaries of the employees, but you also have electricity, you have equipment or clothing. You just have so many other items that you have to calculate into. That's why I think the ISA decided to take that upon themselves. Now, the state, the odd thing about it is, the state only pays us $35 a day if we house one of their inmates, but they charge us $55 a day if they house one of ours. So that's one of the reasons why the ISA decided to take this project on, because we felt that the state was charging us more than what they're giving us. So, and now the facilities that we're currently going to, they're only charging us $40 a day, and they can only do that out of courtesy to the other sheriffs, because you never know when they're going to need assistance themselves. Because in the juvenile realm, it's totally different. I mean, juvenile, we're paying anywhere from $100 a day to, we just got an email today, one of the places we've taken to, I think in July, they're going up to $180 a day. So it's totally different for adults compared to juveniles. I mean, it's a costly thing. Yeah, I think if you remember when I was here a couple of months ago, the options that we felt we had to go by, this was one of the options, along with obviously building the jail, fixing up the D-home, this, or doing nothing. So in order to keep us from getting sued by the federal government, I think this is, at least gives us an opportunity to kind of get our heads together and come up with a plan to find a permanent solution for the problem.
Any other questions from the members?
How much is left in that line item?
Currently, 370,000.
So another 375 is what we're talking?
350.
350 is what they're asking for.
That gets us to what, 650? Are we talking 100? You want, we want to get to 100 inmates?
103.
So rough math, at $40 a day, that's $4,000 a day. There's a little over 200 days left in the year. That's 800 grand. That's short. Unless my math is wrong, but I'm just doing rough math in my head. Right? Am I right? That's 800 grand.
Well, we're currently at 365.
Okay.
We currently still have 365 in the budget. And that's if we're able to find 40 other locations or the 40 other beds for 40 other inmates. Because you have to remember also, the other facilities won't take individuals that have mental issues, they won't take people who are sick. They take our best and both healthy, and we stay with the ones that are not as healthy, both physically and mentally.
Goal's 100, but may not get there.
But we may not get there. I mean, we may not get there. And at the 278 to the 287 that we've been running, that's really made a world of a difference for our team members working and really for the other inmates in there.
I think when we get to the budget process, we're going to have to come up with a number. Is it the 1.5 million for the whole year? What is the number? And that's kind of what I was getting at. I mean, I know you want to keep the level down, but there's only so many funds available. And so we're looking at it from a different angle than, okay, how many can we afford to house out of county, right? I guess that's the way I'm looking at it.
I mean, it just depends on how fast it gets to the number. If you're able to get to the number, then you may get there faster than the appropriation.
We actually got to the 63 a lot quicker than what I thought we would. Because you have a lot of new jails that have been built recently that have a lot of open beds, and likely, these aren't too far away. These are relatively close ones in Tipton and Fort Worth County. Wabash County just opened up their jail. However, they're still getting used to the new jail and the new controls, so we haven't requested any inmates built there yet. But we are looking at Wabash County. I've talked to Sheriff Baker, and there's going to be a possibility for us to put a few inmates in there.
Are there any other questions from the members? I'd entertain a motion. The request is an additional appropriation to out-of-county inmate housing in the amount of 350,000.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Scott to approve the additional appropriation request in the amount of 350,000 to out-of-county inmate housing. Are there any other questions from the members? This time, I'd open it up for public comment. Come to the podium and state your name and your address and allow public comment. There's no public comment. Roll call, please.
Connor?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Iggs?
Yes.
Perez?
Aye.
Poling?
Yes.
Middlecourt?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And more. And everything this evening was advertised.
Yes.
Okay, the next request is for a transport, a person to help transport the individuals to and from court. We originally...
You had a second additional appropriation request written out here, which was advertised.
Okay, we were already able to meet these, and I apologize for not getting that to you. So we were able to get that taken care of without having additional appropriation done on that.
Hang on, scratch that out.
Now, we did have a request for an additional position on the merit side, and we decided to keep it consistent with the way we're currently doing things to save the county some money. We decided to request it on the detention deputy's side instead of on the merit side. That will keep it consistent with what we're currently doing, and that's for one position to be able to transport. We're currently, this, in the month of May, we transported 124 individuals, and we only have actually one full-time guy that does that. We also have a special deputy that helps with it. The problem we run into is he's not always available, and we're having to take people from doing other duties to do these transports. Not only do we transport to other facilities, we're transporting juveniles, we also have to transport people to the hospital. And oftentimes, depending on what they're, well, oftentimes for the hospital, the deputy has to stay there with them, so that shortens or decreases the manpower we have to work in the jail. So what we were looking at doing is creating another position to do transports, to help with those transports since we took on responsibility of doing the adults also.
And this, let me make sure, this is not a merit position?
No, this would be a detention position.
Right, it's a jailer position.
Correct.
What is the classification in the unit?
A B, I believe, if you can.
B?
Just to kind of give you an example, today, we had two individuals that were having heart issues in the jail, and we had to take two people working the jail to sit with them at the hospital today. Thank the Lord, they both are okay and back with us, but those are things that we run into quite a bit.
So the salary that is being requested is that of a deputy?
Yes.
Not a jailer?
Well, it's not a jailer, 43,762 is what we'd need instead of the 15.
That'd be Unit D, which is jailers and corporal jailers.
43.
D.
43, 762. I think the mayor is 52, 53, right?
That's 56, 17.
Yeah, so I guess we need the...
And that is 56.
Okay, 50s.
I know I made this before, but why don't you guys use the retirees?
Well, we have been. Most of the retirees are working at the courthouse, and we have to make sure we're able to man the courthouse. So we do use, right now, we are using retired individuals, but then that pulls away from the courthouse. And we're trying to get to a position where we don't have to pull from other areas, because you just never know. Like today, like I mentioned, we had two individuals we had to sit with at the hospital. We oftentimes have, within a week's time, once or twice a week, where we have to transport someone to the hospital, and we have to have somebody stay there with them. Now, there are those cases where if we can get them O.R. on medical, we do try and do that, if the medical condition's super bad, where they're going to have to be there for a long period of time, and try to get a judge's permission to get them out.
Hey, Mike, would it be appropriate if we tabled this item and then let the Union Negotiation Committee to look over that prior to...
I think so.
That's typically how...
To go through the union contract and...
Yeah. I mean, we can add and take away positions at any time. I'm just wondering if the council's committee should be to discuss it prior to taking action? Because I mean, it changed from a merit position to a jailer position.
And we have time. We, you know, because we're still, we're still good with what we have. We're just looking ahead and trying to prepare ahead. And so we are able to get those 40 additional moved out.
I think it makes sense, just contractually make sure we're in compliance with where we need it.
Yeah, and what we're following in that regard?
I would think so, yes.
We're fine with what we have right now, we're just trying to plan ahead.
Yeah. I think that'd be my recommendation to review it prior, at least that.
Whatever you guys need from us, let us know, and we'll get you the information.
Is it okay to ask a question?
Yes.
So if this were to be granted, I know it might be kind of difficult, but on a percentage basis, how often are, like 10% of the time, are we going to be needing to pull somebody? Because this is going to be their full-time job. Would this handle like 95%?
It should handle the majority of it. I mean, obviously, you can't guarantee what's going to happen. Like I said, today, we had two individuals that had to go to the hospital and still had to do our regular transports. Unfortunately, in our profession, you just never know. But I think it would help us out tremendously to be able to do full-time spot that that's all they're doing. And really, sometimes, you know, they may be able to do other things, too, but that would be their primary responsibility to do that.
So if by chance there would be no transport, whatever reason there's no transport to be done for the day, this person could go into the...
Can help work the jail and do those things. And we always want to try and make them multipurpose, right? So there's more things that you can do, one thing, so. And that's what Deputy Floyd does right now, he's our full-time guy. And just so that you guys know, we actually took that over from the merit spot, because we wanted that merit officer on the road to help serve on the road. And it's, since we've turned it over to the detention side, they've been doing a phenomenal job scheduling them and getting people picked up and taken where they're supposed to. Floyd, Deputy Floyd's one of our full-time ones right now.
If you're not in a time crunch, I'd take table it, and then bring it back next meeting would be sufficient, but...
Okay, sounds good to me. We appreciate it.
That's the will of the council.
I'm going to motion.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. President, making a motion to table the request by the Grant County Sheriff Bill Garcia regarding his transport officer request.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Poling to table the request for an additional detention deputy to the next meeting. Are there any other questions, comments from the members? Public input? I think that's an inmate up there, Ben.
In my opinion.
Roll call, please.
Scott?
Aye.
Poling?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Iggs?
Yes.
Perez?
Aye.
Middlecourt?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next item under new business, item B, Grant County IT Marcus Elliott with an additional appropriation regarding the county general fund. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. All right, well, I come to you this evening for a request. Currently, we have a employee that is out on F M O A, and so what we're looking to do to fill the gap is to have additional appropriation to help us get some help while this person is out. And so basically, I came up with a deal here, so we're looking for an additional appropriation for a new temporary part-time help desk, care one, for six months, and at a rate of $22 and 78 cents an hour. And with it being part-time, it'd be 28 hours a week. And in order for us to do that, we would have to have an additional appropriation in the amount of $15,308.16.
Are there any questions from the members? Obviously, the person out on F M O A would be giving your budget an increase, correct? You're using all your salary line items or...
Right. So I talked to Nancy about it. I can tell you, the person's F M O A is supposed, I think it's supposed to run out in July. So I don't believe we would need to utilize these funds, because basically, they would either come back or should be able to post that job essentially.
Is that employee's F M O A unpaid?
I, like, I'm not sure if I can answer that. To my knowledge, they're out.
I don't understand your answer.
They're, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure if I can, I mean, maybe you know, but I...
Well, there's, usually, F M O A is unpaid, is my understanding. So I guess my question is, if it's unpaid leave that you're trying to replace, why would it be an additional appropriation rather than just pay them that money?
Well, my understanding is, is we can't technically touch that position or the money in that position while they're gone.
That'd be correct.
So that's basically why we have to do a separate item for it. So I'm still a little hazy on the F M O A stuff, but I mean, that's my basic understanding of it.
So this tape covers you for the six months while that person's out on F M O A.
Correct.
They're going to make the $22.78 an hour. They're only going to work 28 hours a week, and your request is for the additional appropriation in the amount of $15,308.16. But we're thinking it's going to run out in July, which this one may be, maybe offset itself possibly.
Right, and to add another offset to it, I calculated that, you know, with this individual being on unpaid F M O A, you know, there should be roughly, I calculated at $9,567.60 in unused funds from our salaries account. in unused funds from our salaries account, which is where that gets paid from. So that would sum that, that would go towards the, at the end of the year.
Are there any questions or comments from the members?
It doesn't make any sense just to appropriate this for like two months at a time if there's so many uncertainties instead of appropriating a full fifteen thousand.
Well, obviously, if he doesn't use it, I mean, just because it's appropriated, don't mean you have to use it.
True.
I mean, what are your thoughts, Angie?
I mean, I guess I would just appropriate it and whatever's unused will return back to county general. Especially against certainty of the FMLA.
Are there any other questions from the members? If not, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve their request.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Perez to approve the additional appropriation within the part-time help desk technician at the twenty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents an hour, twenty-eight hour per week in the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred and eight dollars and sixteen cents. And is that the current rate or is that a salary?
That's the same rate that the replacement...
Okay, so it's a salary ordinance amendment then?
Yes, it's a salary ordinance amendment. So do you want to do that in the same motion?
Yeah, including the salary ordinance amendment. Any other questions from the members?
Angie or Marcus, maybe you know, is there no other accounts we can transfer from to make this happen?
Not without putting it into the red and something else.
Any other questions for the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Connor?
Yes.
Perez?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Hicks?
Yes.
Pulling?
Yes.
Middlesworth?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Yeah, thanks, Marcus. Next item under new business, Item C, Grant County Circuit Court, Mark Spencer. Judge Mark Spencer with the transfer of appropriation within the county general fund. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. I have two requests tonight. The first one is a request for an additional appropriation of thirty thousand dollars. The purpose of this is for the jury per diem. As you may recall, Circuit Court has all of the court's jury per diem funds. And we've been trying a lot of cases. Also, the jury pay was increased last year for the first time that I can recall since I've been on the bench. This is my eighteenth year. So it's a little bit more expensive to pay a jury now than it has been over the last eighteen years. And we're trying a lot of cases, and so originally appropriated, or in the budget, it was fifty-two thousand dollars. I'm asking for another thirty. I'm not gonna promise you that I won't be back again because we've got a lot of trials coming up. But for the moment, I'm asking for thirty thousand as an addition.
Did we advertise for that?
The request came in after the cutoff, so I explained to you that it would be at the July meeting. So no, it's not been advertised nor was it on the agenda. Now, the transfer is, but not the additional, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this came in after the cutoff, it was short of the time.
All right, okay.
So we can approve the two thousand from contractual services to jury meals?
Yeah, so that's the other question, two thousand transfer from contractual jury meals. Do you need me back next meeting for this other request? I won't say, I would say exactly the same things I would this meeting at the next meeting, so.
I mean, if you want to, we'd have to suspend our rules, obviously, but... I mean, do you want to hear about the thirty thousand? Or you want to wait till next month?
I'd be okay with suspending rules.
Next month, okay. So go ahead, let's go ahead and take action on this and we go back to that item.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Yeah, so similar situation, we, again, the jury meals account has been depleted because we have lots of juries and they're eating. And so this is just, and this one will probably take us through to the end of the year, it looks like. So just two thousand dollars amounts of transfer from contractual.
How many trials have all the courts done this year?
I can't tell you off the top of my head. Quite a few, quite a few more. Like I had, I think I've got forty-three scheduled for trial on a week from Monday. So we're hoping to try one of those in future weeks or similar.
Are there any questions or comments from the members regarding the transfer from contractual services to jury meals in the amount of two thousand?
But you can say that with a whole lot of confidence. You're hoping to try one out of forty-three?
So you have the forty-three Ds?
I have forty-three Ds, yes.
Yikes.
Yeah, well, you have to set criminal trials within a certain period of time, you have to dismiss the case. We have a lot of cases, we, I think I shared a few, we had twelve hundred felonies that were filed last year, which was a record of twelve hundred. And we're, I looked at first quarter this year, we're at two ninety-six, we're right in line with that. It's a little lower than the first quarter of last year, but higher than the last two quarters, so. So we've got a lot of cases. We have one of the highest caseloads in the state per judge. So we're in the top ten per judge caseload, and so box them up and try them.
Or if there are no other questions, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the request, transfer the two thousand.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Scott to approve the transfer in the amount of two thousand dollars from contractual services to jury meals. Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Connor?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Hicks?
Yes.
Perez?
Aye.
Pulling?
Yes.
Middlesworth?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, go ahead and inform us on the thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and on that, as I indicated, that would be an additional appropriation. And that is just, so this is for jury per diem, and so it's what you have to pay a juror for. You pay a juror a certain amount for showing up for jury selection, and they get a larger amount if they're selected and seated. And so this is simply what we pay to the jurors. Our typical jury panel is twelve and an alternate. The lower-level felonies are six and an alternate, and the civils, six as well. But we, most of the ones that we're trying are the higher-level felonies. And so, and it depends on how long a case lasts in terms of how much per day you have to pay the jurors. But as you can see, we've kind of depleted that fairly quickly the first part of the year, so.
Are there any questions?
Where can I find those statistics, like the trials?
How many trials? I can probably get them for you, if you're interested.
Like for each court?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
Or there's a, if there's a link or a website, I don't know if you would... I know you send the statistics to the state.
Yeah.
It's easier for me to go there, you know, instead of you doing it.
Yeah, we do, but it won't give you anything current for this year. So everything is provisioned for, well, you get first quarter maybe. So, yeah, let me take a look at it, I'll send it to you.
All right.
Yeah, I can do that.
Are there any other questions from the members? I believe that's all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you having me.
Next item under new business is lit discussion this evening with Mr. Darren Bates. Good evening, sir.
Hello. Welcome along.
We're outside in the hot, it's time for our show.
All right, good.
Go ahead. This is our annual review of the lit tags.
Do we get an answer for the county councils to do a PSEP on their own?
I have not received anything back from the county.
That's what you wanted to discuss mainly, was doing a PSEP. And so you get an answer from, in a DLGF. The last thing I knew is, three months ago, even in a taxing board county, which you are, the first time, given you don't have a PSEP, PSEP is 911, funding to fund all equipment, services, payroll, everything about 911. And the law has been for a decade or more that the county council on the first time can create it. You still gotta send it to the taxing board for they can acknowledge it, but last thing, as long as we get approval, you know, you have the right to implement it. Five years ago, there was a limit of point two percent. I don't know if the first time that there is a limit, but when we talked about it outside of here, you didn't even need a point two, it was looking at, you might need a point one-four or one-five, one-six, somewhere in that range. So...
I know, you know, last year, we made an error in the advertisement, so the, our body's recommendation didn't get voted on with creating the PSEP at the point one-seven or eight, I believe.
And... First, I was all intermixed with rearranging and doing different things.
Correct.
So what you have the ability is, if you're still having issues with your 911, which it sounds like you have been since you created, what, seven, eight years ago? I've helped at least in fourteen counties with PSAPs. It's the one thing that the public has never, as a ninety-eight percent approval, they want funding. They want to know when they call 911, they're going to get immediate service. Because in retrospect, my father had a stroke years before you did that, and you were seventeen minutes late beyond the limit. But he survived and he was okay. And I've talked to a few other people in Grant County at that time, and that was a common thing. So that's one of the reasons why you made this 911 center and dissolved all the other three or four that you had. It's just that you should have, at that time, created a PSEP to fund it outside of property taxes. That way, income taxes done it, and that's, majority of my counties have done that. The ones that haven't, the irony is, is they're still collecting enough from the landlines, believe it or not. I guess they're big enough or they haven't got cell phones enough in some of the county... Rolling Hills of southern Indiana, cell service isn't the best, so they still have landlines at that point. And they're still making sixty to eighty percent of the money off the landlines. Where you, I think you're twenty or thirty percent of the way your numbers ran. So you're needing more money, and you still have, I guess, two years on an agency agreement with Marion Gassidy in Jonesboro. The catch was, that was a fixed amount eight years ago, and your costs have gone up, so technically, you're flipping the difference. So again, you're constantly going down the drain. So if you were the past one, one, that would nullify and do away with that agreement because in that agreement, you explained to me that if you had a knife and PSEP, then that dissolves and it goes away. But then the PSEP would pay and you wouldn't be tapping into your general fund. And general fund is based on property taxes, which is condition of cap losses. So again, at that point, you have the right, with all we know at this point, you have the right to implement a PSEP on your own. Now, in doing that, you would then increase your income tax rate. But after doing that, then you could, as long as you don't submit it to the state, that's the catch. Do not submit any paperwork to the state. If later on, you want to also address the rearranging of how you're dealing with your lit. At that point, you can tell the other units, "Look, we have the right to do a PSEP, but as a taxing board, we, as a group, have the right to rearrange and take away the credits from property tax relief and utilize it better because you're not even, half your money isn't even coming back as revenue on property tax relief." The people in most of towns now, the credits they're getting on their bill are going against the cap losses, so they're not benefiting from the income tax, property tax relief. But people outside the city limits, they're getting the money because their rate's not high enough, so they're getting a relief. But they're also paying, at that point, the people in the city are paying and not benefiting, so it's not really fair, one, like I said, less than, about half, a little bit less than half are benefiting. So income tax, the state keeps creating more and more, their words, buckets. You've got, you've always had economic development, you have public safety, and subset of that is PSEP. You've now got EMS for ambulance service. You've got a crescent facility, jail, lit. And there's one that they're probably gonna do away with, the only last one year at this point, was fire, volunteer fire districts. It's kind of touchy and nobody understands it, so that's why they're thinking about doing away with it. But the point is, they keep creating more and more ways of paying your bills because they keep saying, one, two, three, you can count, you're supposed to have been relying on the circuit breaker caps, one, two, and three, not giving credits to bills. And that's why they keep cutting out. We're down to, in my opinion, two methods where fifteen years ago, we had twelve different ways of giving credits to bills. We're down to two. You can target one, two, or three. And the only one left that you had to change was, there was so qualifying res, it was just res. But the first of year, end of the year, first year, however you want to look at it, they redefine the res, basically what qualifying res was. What we had meeting last year, it was supposed to be just normal homes, no commercial apartments. And to begin, they said, "Oh, no, no, we changed that at the last minute." Now, commercial apartments are included in. So that's why we still did okay on your bringing in revenues from your cap two rentals. Now, the catch is, that's gonna increase this year for next year moving forward because practically anything now in a homestead, it may not be cap one, but it's all of your cap three. Basically, everything's either considered as a home, part of your home, or it could be a possibility of a rental. So you're gonna see more cap losses next year in cap twos. And that's about it at that point. Rearrange, I have no figures because again, we don't know what you want to do.
I guess this is...
It's just a discussion at this point.
Yeah, discussion for the members, is there anything that we would like to look into to have Mr. Bates run the numbers?
One of the reasons why a lot of the county had told last year not to do anything, but most of them did anyways, was the state increased the homestead supplemental from thirty-five percent to forty percent. Next year, they're gonna drop it back to thirty-seven and a half, and then the year after that, they'll drop it back to thirty-five because they're anticipating the assessment on homes is on flatline now, that it jumped, and that's why they jumped it to forty percent. On top of the fact that last year, they felt they wanted to give a good story to the tax homeowners. But there's also talk about that they might even extend that and amend, that was a word I was looking for, I don't want to appeal, but amend the supplemental to even forty-five or fifty percent. The biggest problem is, it's sixty percent up to that forty-eight thousand because they moved the mortgage, the three thousand, they got rid of mortgage, but they increased the homestead from forty-five to forty-eight. The problem is, people that have, say, fifty, sixty thousand dollar home, they just lost the mortgage because sixty percent of fifty thousand, only thirty thousand dollar deduction. And so they don't benefit. So unless you have an eighty thousand dollar home, the board got cheated. And if they raise it again to, you know, you know... And if they raise it again to, you know, you know, 45 or 50%, then the poor will benefit at that point, only because of the percentage can increase. But now, all the expensive homes also get an addition at that point. Now you have, again, it affected your county by roughly 4 million net tax dollars times your rate countywide. If they jump it from 40 to 45 or 50, you know, we'd be looking at, you know, eight or 10 million dollars. And yours is 25% of that, one and a half percent, you know, times 10 million dollars in that A B. So the bottom line is, every time you turn around, they keep knocking you down of ways that you're generating revenue. And that's one of the reasons why, if you contact anyone from the DLGF, they're going to look at you and say, well, look, you still get credits to bills. We don't care that you're having problems. So I've helped at least four of the counties eliminate, it's a process, it's a two or even three-year scaling down, you know. Huntington, I think, five, eight years ago, they had a half percent, and it took us three years to chop it from, you know, .5 to .3 to .15, that's gone. And Washington was .25, they went, you know, down. So your 1%, which is, there's only two other counties that have a 1%. Most of them have a quarter, it's highest three quarters. You're not the only, you're one of three counties that have a 1% credit back to tax bills. You are not maxed out when it comes to rate. Your rate, current rate is 2.55, but the state says, no, your real tax rate is 1.55. You're given 1% credits to bills. We don't consider that part of the tax rate. You can actually have a 2 and 1/2% rate. So you're, you know, .95 away, so your PSEP is easy enough to put in there. And I'm not trying to get you to increase your rates. I've never had any county that I've told to increase. As long as you give credits to bills, you should be eliminating that, rearranging and putting it down to where you pay your bills. Because any lit that pays a bill is 100% captured, where right now, like I said, you're not even, you're bringing in $14 million in credits, and you're only utilizing seven of it, roughly. It comes in as revenue. The other seven just lowers people's bills out of the county. So it's just something to think about, and you got my email address and my phone number. Never hesitate to call. I take calls from county council members all the time.
Are there any questions from the members, or any rearranging, any of the members would like to see?
So you're saying if you increase, let's say, .14.
Okay.
So if you implement PSEP at .14, you can rearrange later by that same amount?
Yes.
And low?
As long as you don't submit it to the state, it's just, you know, you put it in, and at that point, you're, we talked about your, I heard you earlier about suspending rules. You got, you have a commission locally here that the first time around has to be 100% you spend the rule, because the longer you wait, then you're on a time crunch, because you want to get the PSEP out of the way, then you want to talk about rearranging, because then you're going to sit down on the taxing board, you got to give them the two to three, four weeks and notification, you got to get the paper. So the bottom line is, you would technically, if you passed it, your 2.55 would be 2.69. But then the next meeting, you can say, okay, now we're going to vote on, let's move this amount out of credits of the .14, instead of 1%, now you're down to .86. And therefore, you put your rate back to 2.55. Now, it doesn't mean you can't lower, suggest lower it more and do EMS or a correctional facility, or just lower it like Mr. Connor has tried in, for almost a decade, trying to lower income taxes.
So if that was to happen, then that readjustment would have to be approved by the tax council.
That's the catch, is outside of PSEP, the first time on a PSEP, if nothing's changed, you have the right to do this. But everything else, there is not one other lit that you have to send to the taxing board for approval. So the bottom line is, if you implement, meet the PSEP, one, it frees up your general fund, which also frees up Gassity's and Marion and Jonesboro's general fund, because they wouldn't be paying you anymore, starting next year. But if you pass then to pull away that .14 from the credits, but the taxing board doesn't, then it's not your fault, you at least put it out there for them to try to approve.
No, we still have the .14.
But then you still increase your income tax, yes.
Yeah, I think it would have passed last year if the advertisement wasn't wrong, in my belief, but we've tried it a couple of times now. There's always some caveat where we miss or.
A little dot of atrocities. I know, I spoke to Marion Council before all that, and they were fine. Majority-wise, they were fine, and a couple of them didn't like the elimination of economic development .01. But overall, that was such a mischievous amount, they said it was important to do it. Like I said, you can circumvent that just by implementing it, and at that point, his forces are handled. We were going to pass it last year, but you messed up on paper, so more likely. But at that point, you still maybe should be looking at, again, rearranging, and I can do numbers to say, okay, do we want to keep X amount to cap one, or should we be moving more to cap two, or maybe not cap res, because rentals, again, keeps increasing, maybe cap two's a hole, because you're farmers. You know, you are a good farming community. You know, I've got counties that have almost no farming, but I've got other counties that are 90% farming. The bottom line is, farmland, farmland has just been going skyrocketing in the last three years mostly. And I believe they have still one more year jacking the numbers up again. So when you don't give, the only way a farmer gets any credits is to give it to cap two. Cap res is not, anything about farming is not anything about your long-term care, your nursing health.
I really might have the assumption from the other government entities that they, I'd rather get something from them, be in support of the readjustment, if possible.
Again, it's up to you whether you put it in as an individual and do it because the law still allows it, or you just throw it in as rearranging, and one of the things you want to do is you create a PSEP. All right, it's throughout the, what is available to you to let you make your decision.
Give us the flyover of the .5 for the correctional we have.
Oh, let's see, when I got with the state, the, it was not the normal .2 that you can do as a council. It is a special legislation, but at the last minute, they passed after, the first one was that you, the county council, could have done it on your own. Then they got a bill right after that, nine, two weeks later, that then canceled that and says it has to go back to the taxing board. So you can't even do it without all the taxing board approving it. What I tell most counties is, you know, whatever the maximum is, you go for the maximum. If it's the normal one, I wouldn't have maxed it out, but this one, the nuance of the law of the .5 was, once everything's paid off. Now, granted, you don't have a budget, but whatever you do, decide on a budget, once it's paid off, that .5 goes away. It is no longer an option to submit to the county taxing board of that .5. So Mr. Connor would like that, in that if you actually were to pass the .5, and rearrange lit from one down to .5, and the taxing board approved it, say you only did a jail for, I may say, 50 million, and it was paid off in eight years, the law says, oh, once the bonds, once, whatever reason you got that, once all bills are paid, that lit goes away, and therefore, the taxing board has no say in it. It's just, you can't reallocate, you can't move to some, it just goes away. That was one nice thing about the .5, special legislation for you. And that's why I said, is the .5, it just pays it off sooner if you go with a smaller amount, but if you go with some of the numbers like, then you would max out at 25 years. So I have no opinion, one way or the other, that from the sounds, in my head, the numbers your sheriff is saying, you'd be looking at 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars a year somehow to be paying that $40 a day to ship your inmates out. As you keep finding out that every time you get up there, you bring it down to 220, it's not like you really like to be at, and she know you're back at the 260 or 280, then you're shipping more out, so instead of 103, it's 120, it's 150. Time goes on, you're going to keep putting them out there. But that's why I said, it's looked like, you know, 1.2 to 1.5. The question is, is a jail going to cost you more than that to, Mike's comment the other day, the more I found out, as long as they don't jack the $40 up, you're right. Some of the counties I talked to, they said, holy cow, we wish we could have got, we've never built a jail, we got $40 a day, because they were almost twice that. Then again, the sheriff pointed out that all you can sit out is your healthy, nice ones. So you got a challenge here. You know, your county is so diversified in every aspect, not just a jail, but what I, if I try to help you with rearranging lit, Marion loves lit towards commercial, commercial structures, cap three, where Gassity doesn't need cap three, what they use cap one and two, homes and rentals, mostly homes over there, there's very few rentals. So it's a balancing act with seven units of government, you know, towns, cities and towns. And that's why I said, the ultimate way is trying to eliminate the credits altogether, just put it into the different buckets of paying bills. Like I said, again, everything I've learned in talking with senators and House of Representatives in the last three years, they're looking to eliminate the credits, and what you don't want is when you just say, oh, 1% is gone. That's why I told other counties, they should be trying to wean it down, because, can you just imagine, you know, no credits, and now you're off $7 million out of your bottom line of revenue, because you didn't anticipate it. So again, that's something you should be trying to look beyond, you know, just two or three years in the future at that point.
Any other questions from the members? Anything you'd like to see for the next meeting, or? No? I believe that's all. If there is something that comes up, we'll be in touch.
All right.
Thanks, Darren. Next item on the agenda is item E, compliance with the statement of benefits, the Dunham Corporation, the CF1. It's the compliance with statement of benefits for the real estate improvements, and it's for the Dunham Athleisure Corporation, located at 255 South, 600 East Marion, Indiana, 46953. I believe they fulfill all the requirements as in years past. I just need a motion to accept their CF1.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Scott, to accept Dunham's Athleisure Corporation's form CF1. Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? For a roll call, please.
Connor?
Yes.
Scott?
All right.
Case?
Yes.
Perez?
All right.
Pulling?
Yes.
Middle sort.
Yes, motion carries. Next item on our new business is item F, rainy day fund discussion. I would kind of like to change that topic to maybe budget resolution, stating any additional spending within contractual services has to come before the council. Mr. Glickfield, what are your thoughts on that?
As far as.
As far as what we discussed in executive session, is that through a resolution, or?
The.
And I guess I'm going to open it up for discussion regarding that topic.
As far as the issue of having a resolution to limit to a certain dollar amount?
Correct. Yeah, limit the, any additional appropriations to a certain dollar amount.
I think that certainly can be done by resolution. I think, you know, you've got a couple of issues. First issue is, is it all encompassing, or are you going to have exclusions? And then, the second issue is, is there a limit on a certain dollar amount that you want to say above this amount, this is what it needs to be? If I remember correctly, I think those are the two things that we, that are the couple discussion and council debate on.
Is there a dollar amount that the member could be satisfied with?
I don't know. Any over $10,000? Just throwing that out there as a note, it comes to my head.
So the resolution would say that anything over $10,000 excluding some of the offices, right?
Correct.
Obviously, that anything over $10,000 that's currently not been paid, then would come back for an additional appropriation of this money. Is that correct?
Maybe I also was lower or higher.
Of existing contracts or new contracts? New contracts. Okay. Correct. Of new contracts.
New contracts, right.
And you could have that for the next meeting.
Yes. And I'll get a, I want to get a sample draft to everyone within the next couple of weeks.
Why don't we have the president, vice president, and maybe one of the council members talk about any exclusions?
Yeah.
But if it's a new contract, I don't think we need exclusions.
It shouldn't be an issue, yeah.
So.
I don't know, you're right, I don't think we need it if it's a new contract. Do we even need the dollar amount at that point?
Probably not, because we'd want to see any of the new contracts. Would that be correct?
Yeah.
Agreed.
Any other?
These are ones that would require appropriation or a transfer?
That's a good question. I mean, I think probably both.
Yeah.
Appropriation or transfer?
Yes. Any other questions or comments?
So either appropriation or a transfer that are resulting in a new contract?
Would come before this money for approval.
So just to summarize, just to make sure we're all on the same page, we're, I'm going to draft a resolution, says any new contracts that require appropriation or transfer need to be submitted to the council for approval. That's the general synopsis of what we're doing, correct?
Correct.
Should we add to be funded? Because again, we can't.
Sure, sure, sure.
We have contracts, but we can essentially refuse to fund them.
Okay. I'll get that taken care of.
If there's other questions, we'll move on.
Thanks, David.
Thanks, David. I added contracts for services, what was that, Mr.?
Attorney contract?
That's what we just covered.
Okay. The, do we need item H, attorney contract?
No, unless that's a pair.
No, the contractor services, G, is the contractor services with Mr. McCourt.
Okay, I didn't see that.
That we're going to enter in, again.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. The council's going to enter again a contract with Mr. McCourt to do some various budget items. The commissioners did approve the signing of the contract, and. The commissioners did approve signing of that contract and I wanted this body to make a formal motion and a second, accept the contract. It's a little less than last year, it's $5,000, it'll be paid out of the council's budget. It gives us a second set of eyes looking over the budget stuff. Angie, do you have anything else you want to add?
Responsibilities are the same as last year.
Same as last year.
Does our new writ contract could be used? There is, he submitted it. Thank you.
I believe Meeks and Mr. Persinger refused it.
Okay, perfect.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Pauling, a second from Mr. Scott to approve the contract with Mr. McCourt for services in the amount of $5,000 for the budgetary process. Any other questions from the members? Public input? A roll call please.
Pauling?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Connor?
No.
Hicks?
Yes.
Perez?
Hi.
Middle sort?
Yes. We'll move on to item H, attorney contract. We need to accept Mr. Meeks's resignation. You want to go ahead and?
Yeah, so Nathan Meeks, my partner, as you all know, ran for judge at one. He has a very heavy day-to-day caseload and he's got probably a weak net.
Did he run for judge? I did, I missed that.
It was hard, yeah, really. I mean, I can see how you say that, Mike.
I was busy.
It sounded where there wasn't a sign on their report or a billboard, but anyway, I digress. He wants to focus on winding up his caseload. He knew there were some potentially larger issues coming up, which might require some time. So he wanted to basically resign his position for the contract that you have in place. I would then step in and fulfill his obligations, which I'm more than happy to do. And Nathan would then wind down his caseload. He really wants to be done by the end of October anyway because he has to go to judge's school and that sort of thing towards the end of the year.
So the current contract covers Mr. Glickfield's?
Yeah, covers this year and certainly I can address that then at the beginning of the year with new counsel.
I think all we need to do this evening is just take action and send.
His resignation. Accept his resignation and then assuming it's okay, then I would finish the term of the contract.
The contract wasn't with Nathan, it was with the firm, right?
I'm sorry.
The contract wasn't with Nathan, it was with the firm.
Yes, correct.
So, yeah.
And there was language in there which specifically stated if he could.
I'd make a motion to accept Mr. Meeks's resignation with appreciation for his service and to approve Mr. Glickfield pursuant to the contract fulfilling the duties of our attorney for the remainder of the year.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Scott to accept Mr. Meeks's resignation and appoint Mr. Glickfield as the attorney for the council for the remainder of the year per the contract. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input?
Shane, I want to say I've enjoyed working with David as an APC.
If you want.
Please, would you? Appreciate you having me.
Yeah, I come up to the podium, be rude, sorry.
I really got his credit in APC at this one stage. I've enjoyed working with David, he's done a great job for the APC and highly recommend it. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
He's a pretty good guy, you just have to watch him on golf and scores.
If there's no other comments or public comment, I entertain a roll call, I guess, yeah.
Connor?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Hicks?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Pauling?
Yes.
Middle sort.
Yes. I believe that concludes the new business. We don't have any old business. Committee reports? Mr. Scott, do you have any committee reports?
No, I've run this one.
Anyone else? Committee reports? Our next regular meeting is Wednesday, July the 17th, 2024. However, we do have a special joint session July the 10th. Is that correct? At 6:00 PM. Sorry, I didn't put that on the agenda. That's a joint session with the commissioners, July the 10th at 6:00 PM. And you should have received a calendar invite from Mr. Sadoff.
Oh, I have a question about that. I've had a couple of constituents ask how they get on the agenda for that special meeting to speak to the ARPA spending.
As far.
How do you do that?
As far as I know, the commissioners are handling the agenda. So if you threw Mr. Sadoff or Mr. Stewart, do the commissioners.
That's exactly what I told them, I just wanted to make sure I told them, right? Okay, thank you.
Did you want to have the representative from there come to that meeting also?
I think that'd be fine. Is that what the council wants? I think that'd be good. Good idea.
For you.
Why don't you shoot Justin an email, have him add that to the agenda?
I'm sorry.
I was telling Angie, if she'd shoot Justin an email, have that added to the agenda.
Okay, perfect.
That way it's on the agenda for discussion, the beard contractor.
What time does that leave?
At 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, okay.
At this time, I'll open it up for public comment. Come to the podium, state your name and your address and I'll allow you. Who do you want?
Ed Hartman.
Two minutes?
Vermont, Indiana. I wanted to make you aware of a situation that we have in a county and it involves recorder's office. I'll give you some letters here. Sent a letter to the recorder's office requesting public access request person record and they were for leases signed for greater than three years and greater than 10 acres. And so anyway, I got a letter back then from Kyle Persinger and he said that they would basically have the information by January 26, 2023, which he meant 2024. So that was mailed in December of '23. Anyway, then there was another letter that came on January 23rd, three days before the information was due, saying the recorder won't be doing it basically because it was too burdensome of a request and it would interfere with the regular discharge of the functions, the duties of Grant County Recorder. I then sent another letter back saying that I was surprised that the request would not be completed on time. The recorder's had now two months to complete this request, which was not including an extreme number of records. Recorder's office was operating according to state code. It would have been a simple matter for them to comply with this request and I cited state code IC 3231-2-1 necessity of recording. The first sentence doesn't apply because it's for transportation leases, but the next section B does. Not more than 45 days after its execution, a lease of real estate for a period longer than three years shall be recorded in the miscellaneous record in the recorder's office of the county in which the real estate is located. Their failure to properly record the leases needs to be corrected by them and they should not let this go any further. If they were to contact their software provider, they may instruct them how to accomplish miscellaneous records setup. This reply, this request for records is too burdensome, is an embarrassment for the county and this response from them is unacceptable. It's really not that many records to look for, but volunteers went up and actually searched the public computer up there, spent, one lady spent over a week daily going up there and found quite a few records. Another man spent a day and found an additional one that had been missed. We don't know how many of them missed, but this would be an easy matter to go up and pull them from the miscellaneous file if they'd been recorded correctly, put in there, which they were back when wind farms were trying to come into Grant County. It was easy for someone to go up and pull them all right away and just give them a copy. So this is kind of an obstruction to getting that task accomplished. The public really has a right to know. So I think they still need to fulfill that and I think you gentlemen have a little bit of power over them. In the coming budget, they may not need a salary increase until they improve their performance. That would be my recommendation anyway. Thank you for hearing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, any other public comment?
I sent everybody an email today, or at least five members of our.
Go ahead and.
Website, did you get that?
Go ahead and state your name for the.
Oh, Todd, was I saying from Vermont?
Thank you. Yes, I received your email.
I want to make sure it went through because I tried to go through the county council email address before and then I talked to IT because it did not function and then I could not find it today, so.
Yep, no, I received.
Just checking to make sure that that works. And that's still, and that's an appropriate way to bring things to your attention, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I just want to publicly come out and tell you that I've made this property tax appeal based on there's no plan for the solar and that affects you because that could ruin, you know, your tax face down. And the last thing that, you know, the county really wants is a class action lawsuit put out. And so I just want to come up here, put a face with the email and if you have any other questions, do you want to direct me, you know, how you do, or, you know, send me any email with any comments or questions, but I want to pursue this to see where that leads. Basically, I'm trying to, you know, get a plan out and then that really comes down to the commissioners and the area plan commission, right? As far as where a plan comes from. Those are the places where the plan should come from. And I'm trying to give everybody the email, right? So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And then the ads piece here, those are really surprising and interesting because I talked to the recorder a week or so ago and so there is a, they have a long item budget, if I'm not mistaken, on digitizing their records. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to check that, okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
May not be able to find their record if they're not in the right folder. Any other public comment? I believe that's all we have. Meeting adjourned.